Well, I will call the meeting to order and stand for the next lead.
My pleasure, citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty is just as important.
Okay, and I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda.
Okay, and I would like to amend the agenda to add an introduction to our communications specialist, Amanda Marley-Clark. And that is all the amendments I will make at this time.
We can do that right with the other introductions.
Okay, and any discussion? Not hearing any. That passes. And we are, Laura is not here today and she is excused today. Okay. And let's see, public comments on agenda items. Do we have any?
It's like Michael.
There's quite a few.
Oh, there you go. We do have quite a few. Okay, so, let's see, we have that. And to speak, just a few to speak and then some to now. So some are sign-ins and some are to speak. Michael, would you like to speak in the beginning or would you like to speak when we get down to the timber?
Yes, I'll wait until the good, she's excited.
Okay, and then Joshua?
Same.
Same? Okay, and Julianne?
I guess I'd rather speak with them while they were, I was hoping.
The same subject?
Oh, we can go, we can start.
Is that okay?
I couldn't hear.
Yeah.
We actually want to go.
Oh, okay, okay. All good.
You can do a mix. Some of you can speak now, so you can speak there, doesn't matter.
Yeah, if you want to do it now or you can wait until we come to that.
I don't recall us voting to approve the agenda yet.
No, you have to do that first.
We just did that.
We just did that.
We didn't vote.
Oh, we didn't vote.
Right.
I didn't, I thought we did. I said, "Not hearing any," I would prove that we moved the agenda. And then, "Not hearing any discussion."
We have to vote.
Oh, I thought, okay, you're absolutely right. The first back in person and I'm vomiting, guys.
It will be fine.
I'm okay, I'm not embarrassed, but I totally missed that, yeah. Okay, I don't need to do a roll call?
No, but we have two votes to vote, because we have to vote on the amendment and then vote on the original motion, which was to approve the agenda.
What are we gonna do without you?
Okay, so first we will approve the, the amendment. And do I hear any discussion on that? Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? No? Okay, and then the agenda. There is no discussion on that, asked for that, so we are good.
And it's the agenda as it has been amended.
As it has been amended, I will, yeah.
Any further discussion?
Everybody in favor?
Yeah, well, there you go.
Say aye.
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 All right, all opposed? Okay, that passes. Now, we are on to, we've done the public comments and then the student board member comments. Take it.
Wait, did you have some of them that wanted to speak now?
Oh, I thought that we were going to do it, I'm sorry, I can't hear very well. One, two said at the time.
Yeah, and if any of you come up, just say your name and where you live and...
So we're gonna do that part now?
Oh, okay, okay.
If you would like, okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Sutroff and I live at 2160 East Trail Bend Drive, Belfair, Washington. I am here to urge you to oppose the timber revenue for public services resolution number 03G22 because it is the wrong direction for public education and services funding. DNR should be promoting sustainable selective harvesting, variable density of marketable timber value, not clearcutting. More of our forests must be preserved as carbon sinks to help fight our climate crisis and enhance habitats, plus respect tribal treaty rights. Washington State had a multi-billion dollar revenue surplus last year. We must insist rural schools and communities be fully funded, but not by clearcutting our forests, silting our salmon-bearing streams and destroying our shellfish beds and industry, causing landslides and flooding. People want and need forests, trees. More well-paying jobs can be created by restoring forests, riparian and shoreline habitats through sustainable practices and tourism. An earth and people-friendly resolution urging fair funding, respect for tribal treaty rights, renewable, sustainable, and climate-enhancing solutions is what is needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joshua Wright and I live in Timber Tides near Union. And I would reflect all of his comments. I'm 18 years old and I live here. And I think the forests that grow on public lands are a lot worth a lot more to me and my generation's standing, both as an educational, you know, place where you can go learn what the land is like, learn to interact with the land, explore the forest, you know, that's been a really valuable thing to me personally, but also for their carbon's, you know, value. And I think that, you know, there's a lot better paths to funding rural schools than basically clearcutting our futures. And I would urge, you know, all of you to vote to even oppose logging of these forests, especially clearcut logging, and move to a different funding model. I don't have any comments, but that's sort of what I'm asking for. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Julianne Gale and I live in the Spencer Lake neighborhood, a neighbor of yours in the Pioneer School District. And I'm speaking today to ask you to please take a little more time to learn about item five on today's agenda before voting, so that you can make a thoughtful and informed decision. First of all, let me be completely clear. I'm a former public school science teacher, a former community mental health worker who has worked with North Mason students, and a current tribal youth program manager. I am 100% in support of fully funding schools, especially rural schools. I am also in 100% support of youth having clean water, clean air, and a safe and stable climate for their future. Local forests provide irreplaceable cultural, economic, educational, recreational, and psychological benefits. If protected from clearcut industrial logging, our local forests can sequester more carbon per acre than the Amazon rainforest. Supporting our youth also means supporting our forests. Unfortunately, current DNR timber harvest practices are based on clearcut logging and are not sustainable. There is increasing recognition that it's a false choice to make us choose between funding our schools now and safeguarding a future for our children. This movement is growing, and it includes current and former superintendents of public instruction, former commissioners of public lands, school board members, politicians, teachers, youth, families, economists, independent scientists, indigenous peoples, and more. In addition, the logging of state trust lands won't even guarantee any funding for North Mason schools. There are two types of timber revenue from DNR that North Mason gets. One comes from state forest lands, also known as state forest trust lands or transfer lands, which are lands in the district that guarantee funding back to Mason County. But that is not the type of funding or timber revenue that this resolution is supporting. The second type of DNR timber revenue that goes to school districts is what this resolution is about. And that's the state trust lands that lead to SCAP funding, basically school construction. I want to be really clear. Only 1% to 6% of all construction in the state is funded by timber revenue through the SCAP funding. And North Mason is not guaranteed any revenue from logging state trust lands and hasn't even received any funding from this source since 2015. But North Mason still risks the loss of local forests through clearcutting on those lands because those state trust lands are here in the district. Plus, the only way that North Mason can receive any SCAP funding is by continuing to have to pass local levies. And we all know how hard that is, and we know that our families are already hurting financially. I don't think that North Mason wants to support a resolution that falsely celebrates the loss of local forests without any guarantee of even a temporary financial benefit. Plus, this is a funding model from 1889. It's 2022. And finally, passing this resolution right now seems a bit premature. The Washington State Supreme Court is considering a court case right now about DNR's trust mandate when it comes to state trust lands. A decision is not expected until April or May. It seems prudent to wait to vote on such a resolution until the Washington Supreme Court issues their decision. I hope that you will consider a thoughtful, measured approach that takes into account the full context behind this resolution. I emailed Arla earlier today and I believe she emailed the rest of you with more information, including 691 pages of an advocacy brief that includes both pro and consides. I'm not telling you what to think. I'm not here to give you propaganda. I'm here to give you information so that you can make the decision that you think is best for your community. Please take the time to examine all the evidence and make a fully informed decision. Like each and every one of you, I want the best for all North Mason students, families, and employees here. And if you have any questions, I am so happy to make myself available. Thank you so much for your time.
Since we're doing all of these now, I have written comments from Mr. Van Beskirk related to this item as well, and I approve those.
Okay.
These comments are from Ken Van Beskirk, a neighbor of our school district who could not be here tonight. He says, "This resolution is to gain your support of maintaining sustainable timber harvests and revenues from DNR state trust lands. Please give this careful consideration. Drive out on the Tahuya Peninsula and take a look at the DNR timber lands. The annual harvest levels have gone down significantly since 2005. I doubt that sustainable timber harvests on DNR land can be maintained into the future at the current level of harvest. Mechanized logging and lower rotation ages will make sustainability very difficult. Also, the climate change ongoing discussions will likely affect future harvests as well. I have another option and suggestion for this board to consider. To help offset the loss of timber revenue, get a new building site for Belfair Elementary School and help relieve the daily traffic gridlock on SR3 at the same time. As you likely know, the property where this current school and old chalet building set was donated by Sam Theller to the community, as I tried to suggest at the Theller Forum several years ago, but was shut down by the moderator, the board should authorize a timber cruise and appraisal on the approximately 30 acres of timberland directly east and south of the elementary school. I would further suggest that after obtaining that appraisal, the school negotiates a land trade with DNR for that timberland and current school site for safe, buildable land on the plateau where a new elementary school could be built. Thank you for your consideration, Ken Van Beskirk."
No, no more have signed up there. And the other three that were signed on here did not want to speak, if that is right. That's what I'm seeing here.
Okay.
Okay, and I lost my agenda because I'm looking between. Now, we are back to, did we have any other public comments?
I think we're back to students.
Okay. And then, we are now to the student board members.
So I just have a couple of things and I'll pass over here to my colleague Audrey. But, so, I just recently attend a WASDA meeting for the, all the student reps in WASDA, which is the Washington Directors Association. And we just finished our WASDA 101 brief that will help brief future student board members and school boards for various, how to get them prepared in the onboarding process for becoming a student school board member. And that will be unveiled next month in San Francisco at the, one of the conferences down there. And so I'm looking forward to being able to share that with you guys, hopefully next month. And then, also, we talked about in the past that there was this Senate Bill 5497 in the legislature that would give student members on the Board of Education full voting authority. And that was, Inslee just signed that bill just a couple days ago. It passed. And along, and now, along with WASDA, we are going to, next year, we're going to look at passing a bill that will give all student school board members some form of voting authority here in the future. And that is all I have. Audrey?
Okay, super. So just a couple of things. At our last board meeting, we brought up vandalism in the bathrooms. So we've kind of come up with a solution for that. The art club has been painting the bathrooms. They look really good, by the way. And so, there, I haven't seen vandalism in them since then, so that's really good. Also, for leadership this trimester, we have a student doing a campus modification project. So that means like picking up trash and that type of stuff, mostly done at the stadium and keeping our campus clean. And then also, May has been, or prom has been confirmed for May 7, 8 to 11 at the Admiral Theater. Thank you.
Very cool. I love hearing about the voting rights for students. That's a, that's a big thing. That's pretty cool.
Yeah, good questions, love.
Yeah, I have a lot of, a lot of mixed feelings about it. You know, like I have to mill it over, but it's a really neat thing.
This people voting has been going on for some time now. It's very disturbing since 1776, really.
Well, all right. We are down to the consent agenda. And I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, any discussion on that?
Just a very minor comment. Normally, I usually have several comments on this, but I don't accept. I just want to note, on our donation report, it's gone.
Yeah.
Wow, I'm really pleased about that.
That was exciting.
It's been really thin for the whole time of COVID and all of a sudden, it's ballooned up. It's great. Otherwise, no other comments.
And that was, actually, you reminded me that that, I opened that up and I went, "Whoa." It was a lot in there. So, thank you to everybody always, but this one is much needed and very much appreciated. Okay, well, not hearing any other discussion, then I will go for a vote. Everybody that is supported, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Not hearing any. That has. We are approved of the consent agenda. And now, we are down...
To introductions.
To the introduction of North Mason School District's security officers.
So I am so pleased tonight. One of the things that, you know, we struggled with was being able to ensure student safety on our campuses in the way that we've come to expect when we were tighter with funds as a result of the levy. So our levy passed in November, and we have recently been able to hire two school safety officers to serve with our students and our staff up here on the upper campus, and they began about a month ago. And I would like to introduce them both and have them come up to the podium and say hello. We have Scotty Beaton and Ricardo Sierra Ramos. Would you both come forward? Thank you, guys.
Want to tell us about how it's going or anything?
Oh, yeah. So for me, it's, I have experience in security back in California, so I recently moved. So for me, that school experience is a little different than what I'm used to, but it's going great. I am starting to develop those relationships with the students. Like she said, the vandalism has come down. There's not as much students in the hallway. So it's getting a lot better. We're making progress. I'm not sure how Scotty's done at the middle school, but for me, it's pretty good up here.
Thanks, partner. Well, some of you know who I am, and I've returned. At this time, I'm with North Mason as one. Update for the middle school, I give it an A+ since I've been back. Students are being students. The respect level of my, perhaps, is right risen, and I think we're in the right direction. And I think it's gonna be a safe school.
Thank you, gentlemen. We're so happy to have you. And finally, this is a brand-new hire. We just finished it kind of in the last couple days. So I'm so pleased to introduce to you Amanda Marley-Clark. Amanda is filling a new position in our district, so we're going to be creating it together. Her job is to help get our brand solidified and positive out throughout our community to help everybody know everything great that's going on in our schools all the time and to build communication avenues with our community and the school. And so I'm very excited to introduce Amanda Marley-Clark.
All right. I had a job with OESD and worked to support the teachers through their STEM projects. Prior to that, I was in, at B C Nurses Union up in Canada, and I worked in prevention advocacy. So it's occupational health and safety, emergent issues such as Ebola, violence in the workplace. So the whole thing was messaging campaigns, supporting the, you know, the people on the front lines. And I just love writing. I love dealing with people, building relationships, and just working to crystallize the voice of an organization. So I'm really, really excited to be part of this and look forward to starting.
Amanda will start in mid-April. She has some family commitments before then, so we're very excited.
I'm gonna spend some time, you know, just getting the language of the organization and then I can hit the ground running.
We're so happy to have you. Welcome.
Thank you. I feel very welcome. Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right. I get to keep introducing things.
No, no.
So next up, I would like to introduce our principal and assistant principal from North Mason High School, Chad Collins and Steve Hackett. And I think they have some students with them to come and talk to you about the high school and what's going on.
Thank you for having us here. We, Dana told us to put together a presentation to kind of talk about what's going on at the high school. So we have two, the bigger part of the presentation, we're gonna get to the kids in a moment. But I wanted to start with how we started the school year with our staff. We always try to get creative on doing something neat with our staff on our August days because that's a meaningful time we have with our staff. Why, the kids aren't here yet. A couple years ago, we rented, we paid for a school bus and we took our staff on a tour around our district so our staff could see our community and know what our homes, where our kids live, and what homes look like when they assign homework. So that was three, four years ago. So we tried to do something different this year. As you know, we all know our Guatemalan population is growing. And we just wanted to show our staff what it's like for them to be in our school. So we invited a young man by the name of Andres Francisco in North Mason High School, 2018 grad, who's currently going to Evergreen State College, gonna be a teacher, want to hire him. He's really close. We're a believer in growing our own. We invited him in in August, and he taught three different lessons to our teachers. He taught the same lesson in English, he taught the lesson in Spanish, and then he taught the lesson in Congoleo.
Wow. But he started with Congoleo.
Started with Congoleo. And it was a lesson on making handmade tortillas. It was powerful. Our staff loved it. Some takeaways were the importance of hand gestures, using pictures to show kids what they're talking about. And we think it was a great way to start the year. That was pretty powerful. Dana, she was able to stop on that day. We still talk about that day. Just wanted to share that with you.
That's really creative.
It was a great connection too for just dudes who don't speak English, just for all students across the board. For, as teachers, we had great discussions, like, "Oh, that kid who's sitting there with this IEP or this 504, how are they not feeling connected now?" And just talking louder and slower does not help me understand. So it was, it was really, it was good for all of us to sit through that. And then, the next part, Audrey kind of talked about our bathroom issue that we had going on, and Ricardo mentioned it also, early in the year. I'm sure you guys are really big into TikTok, but there's these TikTok challenges where kids would go and it was cool to vandalize bathrooms. And it was a trouble at our school. It was a trouble throughout the whole nation. And we were having to close down bathrooms because it was getting so bad. And finally, a student came up to me, Noreen Grant. She came into my office and she said, "Mr. Hackett, at previous school, we had the same thing, had a lot of vandalism. I've got an idea. Can I tell you the idea?" I'm like, "Please, yes, let's go." And she said, "If we get the art club to paint the stalls, can we do that? We'll come up with the designs. Can the school pay for the paint?" I said, "Well, sure. Tell them what are you thinking?" And she said, "I just think if kids see that their peers did the work, that they'll respect it and they'll start respecting our school more." And, I mean, I couldn't run to Chad's office fast enough, like, "We gotta go for this and for that." And so, these girls, and Jen Lucas, our awesome art teacher, is running the art program, and they have taken over. And I have some pictures I'll show you guys. And then the kids can come up and talk about it because everybody'd rather hear them anyway.
Yeah, Leanna and I have seen this in person at some meetings.
We did. Well, we didn't get to see the finished.
Yeah.
They were just in the middle of it.
We saw part, we finished. They're still in the process of getting.
That is amazing. This space one is...
And so they're still, they're still going through. We have one more bathroom still downstairs to get.
Oh, wow.
Sorry, guys, these are so cool.
Yeah, pass them, yeah, I was gonna say, like, right here, just... That is incredible. That one's not that, I can tell.
You guys might have seen these before.
That is really good.
Oh, Hackett, one more. Mom wants to see one.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I was gonna give you a frame on that part. So far, it has been a great success. I know Art came up and he looked at it, and some of you guys have been able to see it also. And the kids have really bought into it, you know? They put a clothes sign up and they'll go in and paint. And you'll hear, you know, the first time I heard a couple of guys walking by, "There was a bathroom closed." I'm like, "Come here, I'll tell you." And then, once they've seen it, just to tell everybody else about it, and it's been, it's been really, really cool. So we have the students, you'd rather bring them up. You guys can talk to them about it. So Avery Dupont's here, Jordan Berry is here, Aubrey Trammell is another student who painted, she painted the dragon mural. She wrote something that Ms. Lucas will read, and then all 100 guys are here also. So let them come up and then we'll talk a little bit. You guys come on up?
Hello, I'm Avery Dupont. I painted the, the stall in one, the bathroom in one space. And then I painted most of the koi fish in both bathrooms.
Hello, I'm Jordan Berry. I am finishing up the koi fish that Avery started. And I hope to work with more of the rest students as we continue.
I'm all 100 guys there and I'm painting the squirrely, I don't know what it's called. The squirrel looks black and white.
Great work, guys.
Yeah, it looks really good.
Do we ask a question? Isn't there a danger people will cut class and go to the bathroom just for inspiration?
It's so wonderful. I'm an artist myself and watching, I got to come in and kind of see you guys with paint on your hands and learning how to express yourself as well as you have this young is not easy for a lot of people. So, great on that, great on that. I'm, I'll probably cry about it. So I'm, it's really great. So I'm, it's really great. It's beautiful.
And there's another comment?
Well, Aubrey actually wrote, she couldn't be here tonight, but she kind of wanted me to tell you. What I was trying to accomplish from my mural was to give something uniquely my own to my school. I wanted to leave something that laughed, that other people could see and be inspired by. My dragon logos was heavy Japanese influences alongside my own twist to honor my Japanese roots and my Abathon, my grandmother, who immigrated to the U.S. in 1966. I hope that my work will reach others and inspire them long after I've graduated. And then she goes on to say that she's sharing about Mrs. Holm, the literature teacher. She goes above and beyond to not only teach us about English, but like to all of their teachers' youth. Every teacher here has given me a piece of kindness and knowledge that I will always treasure, even the staff here. The lunch in office ladies and custodians always make me smile. I love this school, and I hope logos, the dragon, is also interpreted as a gift for everyone here. So that's what Aubrey likes.
All right.
That's so wonderful. Thank you, guys, so much.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Yes.
Appreciate your being here. Appreciate your talents. Appreciate your efforts you're putting into our school. Jen, thank you.
Yeah.
Wouldn't happen without you. Thank you for allowing our students to come and talk about our school. And I'll close with one more positive about North Mason High School. Breaking news tonight, freshman Boston Stanley pitched a no-hitter for our boys' baseball team.
Thank you.
I love hearing these positives. It's been a tough few years, so this is very nice. I have, I have a few tears here going on, so I can't say anything more. Okay. That was the presentation, and that was that. And then we are on to the resolution.
Right. So you have heard some comments about, from, about the resolution, and just for further explanation before you begin your discussion, we were, we placed this resolution on the agenda for discussion among our board at the request of the WASDA Regional Legislative Team. They have concerns that, as, as we all know, that districts who, taxing districts who receive funding from timber sales are in danger of having that funding transferred away from local taxing districts for DNR to use for other purposes. I think John also attended a meeting on our behalf yesterday to hear DNR discuss some of what they're thinking about that. And we wanted, the purpose of this was to register that we don't approve of that kind of a transfer. But there were some really good other points made for you all to consider. So that is the reason it's on the agenda, and.
So we're, we're up for discussion.
I have a question. Do we need to make a motion about?
I don't think we make a motion for that. We just discuss it.
You discuss, and then you will make a motion to vote or to approve or not approve or table or whatever it is you determine you want to do.
Correct. Discussion can occur, it doesn't have to be on a motion. It can occur before a motion to.
Okay. So my question is, is are they, if every school district decided to vote no on their, the resolution, or a resolution like that, if they did, would it change their?
Yeah. I hear what you're saying. No, this is not a binding resolution in any way. This is just a way that was an ask to have school districts register that we don't want to lose our money.
Yeah.
But we have other ways that we're registering are discussed with that kind of way to move the money around and transfer it to not, not to, they're not planning on stopping the harvest. They're just trying to find a way to keep the money and not give it to local taxing districts.
Right.
And so John actually attended a webinar where they took comments from local districts yesterday, and he made comments on our behalf. So we, we have other ways to say this is not a good idea.
Okay.
You, so if you determine that you can't support this kind of resolution, that's perfectly fine to do that. It doesn't harm the message that WASDA is trying to get out, because I think it's a separate message for WASDA about some of the other really important points that were made tonight regarding, you know, the sustainability of our forests and treaty rights and many of those things. Right now, the way that WASDA would present, and I'm trying, I'm speaking for other people, so it's a little bit difficult, but their focus is on the school districts receive that money because we do not get tax revenues for those lands when they're held in trust.
Right.
So if we have a levy, there, you know, there are certain opportunities to receive money, or a bond, there are opportunities to receive money in the two different ways that the lady, the lady in the audience explained very well. Thank you. You know, so we, we are continuing, we had the type discussed here, as she said, in 2015, but every year, we still get some money from the other land trust sales of timber, sometimes more than others. This year, I think it's about $40,000 so far via Don, around there that we have received, so not a huge amount. But again, I guess, just for your, it was a request that all boards consider, not that all boards vote yes, but that all boards consider this resolution, and that's why it's on our agenda for your discussion.
Is there a timeframe that is necessary for this?
You know, because the decisions that are being made are not happening through the legislature, but separately by, within the organization, we don't know what timeframe that they are going to use to make decisions or not. Did they say anything last night at that meeting, John?
I'm curious to hear it, John.
There's a lot of information coming at me real fast. The general, there was idea that they were going to have a subcommittee to discuss some of the points that were raised, that would then bring, come back to the larger committee, and they would continue their deliberations from there.
Okay.
None of those issues that were raised had anything to do that I could see with this resolution.
Okay.
What types of issues were they discussing?
Well, they were just concerned, there were, there were four plans, and I do not.
You don't have to remember.
Yeah. I don't have to remember all four, but I assure you there were four. And the plans were different ways of getting money to allotting money for the schools from timber harvest. The key feature of one plan, or maybe more than one, was that instead of the money going directly to your school, if it was your land, or land that was assigned to you, it would be put in a general pool and distributed to everybody normally, I'm for democracy. I didn't think that was a great idea, so I had words to that effect. But there were a number of other nice plans that you really had to study to understand how they were different from one another and how they were, it was different plans for allocating money. And it is full with all the divinities and devils that you would expect, something of that nature. So I didn't understand it all, but the grab of it is that they were considering ways of dealing with the money alternative to the way we're supposed to receive it now. And one of the features was some general pool where everybody would receive something. And there were more details than that, which, if I were to tell you, would take the rest of the meeting.
Do you feel like there was any sort of, like, leanings one way or the other about which of the four were most popular?
No. Listen, let me read you what I said on our behalf, and then that may help some. I made comments to the, these aren't my words, but they were basically the kind of thing I said. My name is John Campbell. I'm a member of the North Mason School Board. I'm sitting in for superintendent Dana Rosenback. It is our position that we would oppose any change in the way in which the timber revenues are distributed, which would end with our district receiving less than we do now. We're a small rural district with a history of receiving less than our fair share on timber sales. Not long ago, the state deducted any timber revenue we received from our state allotment. At that time, I testified along with my squim colleague Jim Stoffer, who just spoke, along with representatives from other small districts in similar circumstances. Subsequently, the state policy of deducting the timber revenue from our annual funds was discontinued. We wish other districts well, but we would object to any change in the distribution of timber sales revenue that would diminish the funds now going to our district in favor of their distribution to a common fund. I was pleased that the next two speakers cited my observation in particular. One was Pacific County, and one was Shelton. They agreed with the same principle and had the same concerns that I had. Now, can I speak to a few words about what was before us now?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So I want to commend everybody that spoke today. I mean, why do people go into rhetoric? I guess they're gullible. I mean, I was very persuaded by everything that, that was said here, and it would shock me to find that I disagree with Michael Sipthroth in any material particular, very, very, very large disagreement. I don't understand the relationship between these two propositions. Let me give you my sense of it. What Michael and others are saying is that the way your money comes to you now is a bad idea.
It's a bad practice.
It's a bad practice. Okay? That's what I'm getting from there. The other part that I just defended, bad practice or no, we want our fair share. So I'm not sure what the choice is. I mean, I could agree with both in principle. I mean, in a legal case, a lawyer can have a variety of reasons for finding in behalf of his client. They don't necessarily have to be logically consistent. And so I'm feeling that I certainly agree that we should have environmentally sound, sustainable practices for all the reasons given. And I was very impressed by the letter that was sent to Arla, and your name is sincerely. You know, it just didn't get.
Julianne.
Oh, there it is. Your, Julianne Gale, your name was stapled, so I missed it. So anyway, that struck me as very good. We're stuck with the present system. I represent people of North Mason. My constituents want their share of the money. So I have an obligation to my constituents to do what is best for them, the kids, and people of North Mason under the current system, which has many flaws. And we have an interesting idea over here that I should oppose the current system. I would, if that, if I given an accurate account of what's before us this evening, I would welcome some vehicle by which I could express both points of view.
I like what you just said. I, you know, and this is why I would recommend tabling this issue. I feel, you know, my big takeaway in hearing the comments that Julianne had shared with me is, you know, I didn't have an understanding of what the current threat was and what the current state was. I didn't know you had attended this meeting or that there were these conversations happening at the state level. And Julianne also brought up, you know, this ongoing lawsuit, which may or may not be connected to what, you know, the points that you were making in the subject matter at this webinar. But I don't feel like I have enough information based on just all of.
Yeah.
These points brought up to.
That was my impression just, you know, today, getting all, what did I do yesterday? You know, trying to figure out the relationship between these, these two. Just speculating for a moment, I could imagine my voting yes on the resolution with the proviso that we make our own little amendment and put in something, and we object to the way in which this money is coming to us. We think there are better things that we could do, and it is with reluctance that we approve of our getting money.
I'm in favor of tabling this.
Yeah.
And no, we didn't move yet. We were just, we were discussing, and my, I knew about this before. I knew that the discussions were happening. I think we had talked about this. It was very brief, so it wasn't, it might have just been in passing. And I didn't get the, the feeling that we were, if we voted on this, that we were approving of the way they were doing it, but that we were getting, that they were going to take our money and change what we were getting, but they weren't going to stop what they're doing. So it was, so in my mind, I'm like, yeah, I'm totally for this. So when I hear this, of course, I'm, I'm right on there with you, absolutely, with doing this in a better way. And we're a little, we're little, you know, out here, and we're watching all of these trees go away. But if they're going to take all of that, and just because we're not okay with the way they're doing it, but they're still going to take it, and we're like, take our money and put it somewhere else, you know, because we don't want it because of the way you're doing it, I can't vote for that. Like, I, if we're going, if there's money coming up, it has to come here. It's the same with our ports and everything. Everybody that gets a piece of it is going to want it the same way they've been getting it. And so I really think that they're probably going to vote on trying to keep it that way. But I think separately, like you were saying, separately, that there is a fight here, you know, like, there is something to stand up for, and I would totally put my name on doing it a different way, but also putting it on something that we go.
I feel like we don't lose anything in voting, you know what I mean? Even if we voted against this particular measure, there's no, that, that action doesn't take the money away from us, right? Do you know what I mean? So it just voices an opinion of the board. But yeah, I do make a motion that we table this resolution to, and maybe we have a study session. I don't know the.
Yeah.
I'm already working on the study session in my mind, and I can imagine a resolution that begins. Ordinarily, the North Mason School District is reluctant to take blood money.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, on with that. If you're moving to table it, but you wanted to say something.
Yes. I'm in favor of tabling this because I see there's two issues really involved. They're not, they're related, but they're not the same issue. And I don't think we understand it well enough to really know what the right thing to do is, although I don't think it's terrible, whatever we decide at this point. It's not critical. What these folks told us and explained to us, I hear it, I understand it, I agree with it, but it doesn't change anything. We are not the place to start a change. We are only dealing with our school district stuff. I'm impressed that it looks like they are doing more than just simply coming to us or other school districts.
Sure, sure.
And I'm in support of that, because that's where the action's going to happen. That's where the grassroots stuff has to, has to occur. It can't come from us. We can support it or whatever. But then that other issue is the one that you were dealing with directly in that forum you went to, is the funding and stuff like that. But I think we need more information. Number one, we need to, for ourselves, assess more of what they've told us. We should ask the DNR local people, come in, Peter Allen or something like that, to get their, their take on what they are doing and how it fits in with, or doesn't fit in with what they brought up. We also need to, you know, to just study the, what does this resolution mean more? And, or that kind of stuff.
And study the plans, the four plans.
Yeah.
Except you have to remember that also, who am I to say this stuff? I'm leaving. But anyway.
You have moral authority as long as you're here.
You are still here. You are still a part of this board. You will be for a long time afterwards still.
So I think, I think I did make a motion.
Did you? Okay. Did you say I make a motion that we?
I'll do it again. I make a motion that we table this resolution.
Okay. And I don't, we.
Doesn't require a second.
Doesn't require a second.
Okay. And everybody.
Been discussing, and.
We're done discussing.
You can say.
I do have one quick question. So is this resolution, is it, are we, that we would be voting on, is it the money coming from the state trust lands? Or are we voting on how they handle? how they handle state trust lands such as logging and the practices of logging?
So, the resolution was intended to be about, do not take, if you're going to log the trees, don't take the money away that you give to school districts, but I think and other local taxing districts, but our community members raised some good points. So, I would support the board taking the time to review and come back to a conversation at a later time.
And I think since we have asked those questions of each other, that that makes sense.
Yeah.
If we are still having questions about it, because we thought we understood it, but now we're questioning ourselves that we do table it. So, I will, we've got a motion, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? All right. So, we are going to table the resolution 303-G22 Timber Revenue for Public Service. Table, okay. And then we have...
So, the next item is another resolution. And the administration is recommending that the board take the action to make this resolution, to make a statement to the State Board of Health and the Governor's Office about our position on whether they should make a decision to require all students in K-12 public schools to have a COVID vaccination in order to attend schools in the fall. In this resolution, we oppose such decision. There are, we can talk about it a lot, but there are many good reasons for that. But, and we do have vaccines that are required for students to attend schools, but they're a different kind of vaccine, and they're, in all of those cases, there are vaccines that you have every so many years because it wears off, but not because the disease is changing and the vaccine is becoming less effective with each different change in the disease. So, we do not believe that the state or the feds or any researchers have come up with a fully approved vaccine that will meet the needs of students in any way similar to, say, the measles or chicken pox, and that the state of vaccines currently that are being used for COVID are more similar to a flu vaccine, and a flu vaccine is not required for students to attend schools. So, there's a lot more to think and say, but that is why this resolution is before you. And the State Board of Health appointed a committee to consider this. The committee studied this issue. Our closest representative that was invited to attend was the Superintendent of our ESD, Greg Lynch. And, very scratchy throat. And Greg reported to the superintendents of our region that there were, when they finally finished the discussion and the research and looking at everything, there were seven votes no, six votes yes, and four to abstain. So, as a superintendents across the state, we are concerned that even though our voice as a unit has been very loud, that we also do not believe that this is a time to make this kind of a decision. We are not sure how much we will be heard from the Governor's Office or the State Board of Health without taking more formal actions. So, we would like to ask the board to approve this resolution, that we will then forward with formal action to those offices, along with other districts across the state, to make our point very well-known on behalf of the children that we serve.
Thank you. All right. So, discussion.
I think, do we need a motion first?
We don't have to motion on these first, but a motion to approve afterwards. But discussion on that.
Well, given what we've heard, I tend to, you know, vote as Dana recommends. Seems to me that there's a lot of uncertainty about this, and we don't want to do anything more to create side issues with COVID vaccine-related things than necessary. And so, I think that we should pass this one by.
Yeah, to me, the most, what's the word, the strongest argument in having this discussion with Dana, that Leana and I have had ongoing, is the administrative and financial burden that requiring a COVID vaccine would place on our staff for them having to track who has, who is up to date, who has the booster. Okay, do they need it every year? At this stage in time with the COVID vaccine, it's just not at a place where it's, like, stable enough to have it not be kind of chaotic for our staff to deal with.
I agree. And as I do trust our superintendent, Dana, with that, I also do my own research and thoughts and that to see how I match up with her choices, and I definitely align with that. I want to support that. So, if there, is there any discussion? Do you guys have anything?
All that I would like to say is, I agree, this is, it would be quite the burden on not just the staff and the administration, but it would be on the students and the families. Because what would happen is, there would be people that would not be willing to get the vaccine, and then that's a whole nother issue on its own. And it would be such as online schooling or finding a different school. And we are, we saw how COVID was for this. We are in no way, shape, or form ready to handle a lot of online students all at once. And it would, it would put our students under stress as far as their, some doctors are even saying like, look, if you have the vaccine, we're not sure, but we can't clear you until you've had a thorough, thorough testing of your heart to make sure this is still good. And I wouldn't want our athletes being unable to compete because they aren't cleared for the, for the activities or to practice. So, I do think it was a good idea, and I just want to make clear that this, this resolution isn't to oppose vaccines, it's to oppose mandating vaccines. We are not opposed to the vaccine, but we just want students and families to be able to make that choice for themselves on what they do to their bodies and to their children.
Well said. Thank you.
That was very well said. And coming from our student body representative, I really appreciate that very much. So, any other discussion on that? Not hearing any. If you're for it, say aye.
Oh, I think we need to...
We haven't had a motion.
Oh, wait, you didn't say it. That's right.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution for G22 to oppose required COVID-19 vaccines of students.
Okay. And we have discussed, and if you are for it, say aye.
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 All opposed. Not hearing any. That passes, and we support that.
Thank you. And we will forward this to the appropriate people. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is on to the board development and linkage, and this is...
Oh, no, 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 no.
Isn't it?
Nope, my update.
Yeah, board... No, the superintendent update.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah.
I wouldn't skip it.
I didn't read the big heading. Thank you. Well, I'm going to start. We have a proclamation from the governor, and you know, I tend to read those to you, so I am going to do that. It's not as long as some, but it's very, very important. This proclamation celebrates school educational support professionals and the work that they do in our schools, on our grounds, throughout the district, every day of the school year and beyond. So, whereas educational support professionals are involved in nearly every aspect of education, maintaining buildings and grounds, preparing and serving meals, keeping school facilities clean and orderly, assisting in the classroom, providing over 60% of all instructional hours to special education, English language learners, and opportunity gap students, performing and conducting research activities, providing information technology and media services, administrative support functions, and safe transportation, creating a secure and healthy environment, and many other specialized services. And whereas more than 62,000 educational support professionals work with and help students in Washington's universities, colleges, and public schools, and are the backbone of our public education system, and deserve recognition and thanks for the outstanding work they do for this state and their communities. And whereas educational support professionals are instrumental in fulfilling the state's responsibility to educate all students, and by supporting the learning environment, they serve as crucial partners with teachers, parents, administrators, and school boards. Now, therefore, I, J. Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim last week, March 14th through 18th, 2022, as Education Support Professionals Week. And I want to highlight that in buildings and locations throughout our district, staff and families and the rest of us, we're doing various activities and providing treats and things to show those folks how much we really appreciate what they do for our kids every day, to make school a place that our kids can be in and learn. So, thank you.
I heard the food was really good.
Yeah. So, next up is budgets reports.
We'll start with the Forecast Five one.
Might be the next one.
Sorry.
It's okay.
We need tabs open. I'm trying to find it.
I think it's the second one, Jackie.
You want the dashboard?
Yeah.
We...
Yeah, there you go.
Do you have the dashboard first, or do you want the other one?
The other one first.
Yeah, my blood sugar alarm. Okay. We'll keep going.
Yes, please do. Sorry for the... It's okay, Jackie. I can talk about it too if you can't get it up.
Yeah, go ahead and start.
Yeah, okay. So, we'll start with just talking about the other fund. So, reporting on February 2022, looking at our capital project fund, we are at about $400,000 for fund balance in our capital project. For our debt service fund, we are at about $1,036,000. And then for ASB fund, we are at $404,000. And then our transportation vehicle fund, we are at $339,000. So, for our student enrollment update, looking at February's enrollment count, we are at about 2261, so 2,261 FTE. Not much of a difference from prior month. And then our average here to date is about 200 and, I'm sorry, 2,249. So, that's what, that's what I just talked about with the funds. And then on the next page is a visual for FTE purpose update. There you go. Okay. And then, moving on to the Forecast Five reports, we'll again take a look at the period ending in February 28, 2022. And we'll start by looking at our revenue. So, looking at our total revenue year to date, we have brought in about 44%, and we projected 48%. For the purple dial button, we brought in about 44%, and we projected 70%. This is where you'll see, once we start receiving levy money, we'll be more up to speed with our projected year-to-date total. So, over at the blue one, you'll see that our state sources, we're projected and actually bringing in 48%. And then for federal sources, we projected 47%, and we're bringing in 27%. So, looking at the top 10 sources of revenue, with of course apportionment being our top at $10 million here to date. And then looking at our revenue by source, purple being current year, red being prior year. Our local sources, you can see, we have nothing in there. Again, you'll see that increase within the next couple of months. For our state sources, we're slightly over than we were last year. That makes sense. Our student enrollment count did go up. And then for federal sources, that also went up. What you're seeing there would be the ESNER money that is being claimed. And then on the next page, Jackie, we will do the same thing, except we'll look at our expenditure side. So, our projected year-to-date balance is about 8% of our budgeted expenditure. And year-to-date, we have expended about 46%, and we're projected year-to-date at 49%. For our salaries and benefits, we projected and are actually at 48% expenditure. And then for basic ed, we expended year-to-date 44%, and we projected about 50%. And then looking at the top 10 expenditure by program, of course, basic ed being our top one at $8 million year-to-date. And referencing the expenditure by object, again, purple being current year, red being prior year, you can see for our salaries and benefits, we are expending more than we did last year. That makes sense. We did increase staffing and household salary increases. For supplies, not much, not much change there, not many changes there. And then for purchase services, we are expending more than we did last year. That also makes sense because we're in session now, so there are more things that need to be purchased for our services. And then, next page. So, we'll take a look at the month-end balance. You can see again, as of February 28, 2022, we have a funding, I'm sorry, fund balance of about 2.2 million. And then as of today, we are anticipating a fund balance of about 3 million. And then, final page here, just looking at our financial summary from a very high-end level, you'll see that our total revenue year-to-date, we've spent about 15.5 million, and we budgeted $35 million revenue. So, we've brought in about 44% of our total budget. And then for our expenditures, we spent about 17.2 million, and we budgeted 36.7 million. So, we spent about 30, I'm sorry, 47% of our total budget. So, that right there concludes ours summary update for February. If anyone has any questions.
I do. I, you mentioned the levy funds, and I understand that difference between the projected and the actual for local, but for federal, can you explain the difference between the actual and the projected, why we're short there?
So, Jackie, it'll be on the first page. And if you want to scroll all the way up, you'll see the green, she's probably referencing the green radio button, that one. I knew that one would come up. So, let me show you something. This one, so remember that Forecast Five, they take a trend based on the last four to five years. So, a more accurate perception of that, Arla, would be on the bottom. You see where it says revenue by source? And look under federal, you see that purple one, Jackie, down a little, that purple one right there under federal, you see how that's more than it was last year? That will be a more accurate answer to your question. Yeah.
Thank you.
Did you work with the Forecast Five before you came to North Mason? I did not. I had to learn that from scratch. You did. You've done really well. I watched when you came in. You were very quiet. Yeah. I know we've been out for a while, but I'm watching you, and you're not skipping a beat. You know, I just watched kind of how things go, and you've got a good handle on it. You've done really well. Thanks.
Thank you so much. You know, our main focus of our teaching and learning update tonight was our report from the schools. I think that was really exciting, and it's fun to have the kids come and tell us about some things. But I did note, as we're going through here, and I had all these papers here from people, we did have some additional comments from Mr. Van Buskirk regarding... we did have some additional comments from Mr. Van Buskirk regarding basically the discussion that we had on the March first meeting at the study session with the Skokomish. And I neglected to read those to you earlier, so I am going to read those to you now as a Theller report because we don't have a Theller report tonight.
Right, but that's good.
And I want to honor that he asked that you hear these comments, so. "I asked Board Member Arla Shepherd-Boll on Tuesday to include a link to the meeting video for the March first study session, as it was not in the draft minutes in the study package online for the public to view. I watched the meeting after the link was posted and noted that there were two members of the public in attendance at the meeting, Ms. Jessie Darland of the Kitsap Sun Newspaper and myself. During that meeting, I attempted to comment and couldn't, and that was because it was a study session you just meeting in a government-to-government meeting with the Skokomish. I was finally able to send a chat to everyone. I wanted the tribal council members and the school board members to know that the pond and dyke that failed in two thousand twelve was a functioning stormwater settlement pond, recognized in the nineteen eighty Theller Environmental Impact Statement. It provided detention and settlement for approximately twenty acres of uplands, including the Theller Community Center and parking lots. That stormwater currently flows uninhibited directly into the canal. I knew I'm going to have a pronunciation error, but I'm going to try Subiae or Bruce Miller and how deeply the tribe respects and cares for the land. I have worked with tribal members Tim Leclair, John Strong, and Thomas Longshore fighting forest fires and know how connected and committed they all are to the land and the strong work ethic that they have. During the meeting, one of the tribal council talked about the deep connection they have to Theller, their generational legacy of caring for the land, and how disappointed he was that the school board did not come to them first before the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. Board Member Campbell even gave him an amen after he commented. I would like to echo that tribal council members' comments. It is my and others' opinion that the Skokomish would be a much better transfer of the property. I am deeply concerned about a transfer to a state agency. They are not local and many in the community fear that it would be transferred into the nonprofit Pacific Northwest Salmon Center. I was very disappointed to see the front-page article in the Kitsap Sun this week written by Ms. Darland. The article was focused on the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife and suggested that WDFW would be taking over the property, with only a slight mention that the board met with the Skokomish tribe, but nothing about their comments in the article and no mention of the original EIS for the property." And his request was that you consider amending the meeting minutes to address, to add more detail. But as you know, when we do those meeting minutes, we attach the videos so that we don't include all the details of everything that everyone said. So, that was why we didn't present that part to you. But I did want you to hear what he had to say. And I also wanted to address that there was an article in yesterday's?
Like, three days ago.
A couple of days ago, in the Kitsap Sun, that was very misleading because that article made it sound like the board had already taken action and made a decision to transfer the wetlands to the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. And as you know, we are in discussions with them about that possibility and a proposed settle or transfer agreement is being worked on to bring to the board for consideration. But I spoke with the reporter both last night via email and this morning, this afternoon, and we'll speak with her again tomorrow to get them to write a different article because I wanted it to be very clear that our board has not seen a recommended agreement or even a suggested agreement, and our board has taken no action. And so, the wording in the article was very misleading to the public. And they are going to write something to correct that in the paper. So, I wanted to make that clear.
And we were, when this came up a couple of years ago, they, the acronym is?
WDFW?
Yes. They approached us correctly. I'm correct. We didn't?
We did a request for?
Yeah.
An RFP.
And then they, so I just, I heard the mention that, that, just a fine tune here detail that we had approached them and not the tribe. And I wanted that to go out there, that we did not approach them, that we put it out for everyone and then they came and we listened. And we, at that time, I didn't, I wasn't sure the tribe did not at that time. But not, and definitely, I read that article too aside before we even chatted. And I feel the same way. That was.
Yeah. So, I spoke with Ms. Darland. She's going to write something to correct the misrepresentation. So, we will talk.
That is nice. Yeah, that's good. Thank you. Okay, and we are down to, now I have to put my eyeballs on. Okay, and teaching and learning, and upcoming Board Letter columnist, John, you have March. Did you already, you know, I shouldn't even ask because I'm actually terrible. And I'm next. So, this time, I have to get this one and this one. If anybody has any hot topics, but I, did anybody do the art one on the school?
I did.
You did? Okay. All right, you did. Okay. I wanted to make sure that was covered. And then Laura will be in May and June will be Arla.
All right.
If I might make one comment. This is for the benefit of our brand-new public relations person. One of my themes is that our education today is better than it was when I was in those grades. I think there's a general misconception, and probably you're all familiar with this. There's a general theme out there that the schools are failing. And they're failing in many ways, and it's notorious. And I think that piece of propaganda needs to be gently confronted whenever.
I'm not that message loud in here, sorry. I like your, your.
Yeah, okay. And so, I just think that the more we can tell people about, here's what's going on, really, you know, in the public schools. And I just thought this thing here, the last time I talked, a constituent called me and said, "We need more discipline in the school." Back in my day, they'd take down their pants.
Okay.
Here is a perfect example of non-force, of the power of persuasion and of community building over what we used to call old-fashioned discipline. This is more intelligent.
Absolutely.
You got your themes and marketing orders. I just wanted to put in my amen.
All right. And we do have a, for the good of the order at the end, and if we have any comments there. We're going to finish up with our policy review that we moved to this month, where we normally do not have a policy review, to kind of smooth out our flow for our meetings. So, the monitoring report, we have an action for ER nine communication with the public. A monitoring report is included in this digital board packet. Let's see, the administration believes that all provisions of this policy have been followed and implemented. The administration recommends that the board find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER oh-nine. And the, also invites comments. So, do we have, do we move for that and then discuss? Or do we discuss and then move and then vote?
Normally, we just have a motion. It is not against the rules to discuss before a motion. It's just that normally, we do that.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER nine. I would do, I do have some discussion points.
Okay. And discussion then?
I, you know, I read through this all earlier and I find it, you know, all to be satisfactory. There's just two places where I'm hopeful that we can, you know, all work together and with our new community relations PR folk here, you know, to enhance this. But one C, and this really falls on us, and not so much the superintendent, but promote and enhance the role and public profile of the board as the district's principal connection with the community and the community's voice in governing the district. I understand we do, you know, satisfactorily meet all of sort of the subsets within there, but especially with COVID, we all haven't had the chance to participate and attend community events and really raise the profile of the board. And I, I've been out there a lot in the last year because of my election. And so, I definitely can speak to like a hunger that's out there, that the public has to see more of us and to enhance our profile. And so, that sort of jumped out at me and maybe we can brainstorm with our PR addition to figure out ways to enhance our profile. And then, number three, the strategic plan, I would like to see a little bit more from there. I know we get the MTTSs blueprints annually and the success plans. The publishing a district strategic plan, that's not more than five years old. I think that's a piece we need to work on, or I'm not.
Well, that's, we've replaced that language with our district blueprint.
And I think then, if that's the case, we probably need to adjust the language here to reflect that.
I think you're right.
Right. Those are my two comments.
Good luck.
Thank you, Arla.
And any discussion over here? I think that communication has been a really hard thing for North Mason. I can only speak for North Mason, so it has been very hard. And it seems where we come up in places that we Tetris around, like some people feel like we're doing okay over here, and then we start doing better over here, and then somebody's kind of offended over here that they weren't, you know, that, and even though that it might be the same, it seems like when it starts to raise up, somebody feels like they're coming down. And I don't think that that is a conscious or something that can really, it almost needs a drastic change to like make something different. But communication has changed so much, there's not one avenue anymore. And so, when you're hitting the big mainstream place, and I am, I love that when I send somebody to the office here and the communication already has gone out, but then the communication with the community having questions, and then somebody's always on top of it. So, not just the getting it out, but the, so I love that. I always feel like just there's something else. And I think with our communication, and I don't think we've had one before.
We've never had this position.
So, this is a good historic moment for us and not to put you in.
Put you on the spot.
And I think you seem that you have a very, that you're ready for it. So, I'm excited to see that. So, I think having this discussion.
And you've kind of hit on some things. We're very, we're staffed very carefully and not, we don't have a ton of staff.
Yeah.
So, without having somebody dedicated to this work, we can't do the work that, it was, it was, we could do it before, but it gets harder and harder with each year and with more places and ways that people talk to each other. So, it is a vital position and a vital person to have now, is someone who can kind of make sure that we're keeping all the balls in the air, that we need to keep in the air to make sure that people are hearing our messages and getting us to hear theirs. So, we're really, we're really excited that Amanda will be starting soon.
Definitely. I think one of the things, one last thing from me. When Facebook was kind of the biggest thing, I see a lot of people, especially during the political times and stuff, saying, "I'm out. I'm off Facebook now." And it's like, wait! You were just there. We were coming to you. So, those avenues are challenging. And being in the woods out here, it's challenging. You can't just have a big reader board that everybody sees. So, okay, everybody, for approving the superintendent's, my wording is?
Performance.
Performance, thank you, to comply with ER oh-nine. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Nope. All right. And we have approved that. And then I'm going to go back to my paper because my, it sounds weird. Okay. And then, I almost scrolled up on my paper here. That would not work. Sorry, I can't scroll on my paper. So, I have to be like that. Okay. And the student, ER twelve, next is the student conduct discipline. And we are, recommend that the board find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER twelve. I, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER twelve.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
Case closed.
Well, I do want to highlight, this has been a challenging year and I want the community to know that the board and the staff, that we're all aware and we have all been working hard to address things that are different, that we haven't necessarily had to this degree before. We have seen potential gang activity creeping into our schools. We have seen increased violence among kids of all ages, kids who have not, and often not, usually not deliberate planned violence, that although we have had some pretty significant issues of that, that we've had to work with law enforcement on, particularly at the secondary level. But even with younger kids, we've seen kids less able to control their behaviors. And we've had to take a look at how we're doing that and making sure that we're doing the best that we can to have as few flare-ups or things happen as possible. There will be things that happen that we can't control, but we have to make sure that we really have good structures in place. And we've had to take a look at that this year. We did get our preliminary healthy youth survey results and on Tuesday evening, Tuesday morning. So, we haven't had time to go over them yet with the administrative team. But I also shared them with an eighth-grade class, Julie Lester's class over at the middle school. And I'm going to go hear from them, what they thought about those results as well, probably next week. I met with those students this week because, you know, our eighth-grade classes often identify an issue that they want to set some policy or recommend some policy around. And for the eighth-grade class of Mrs. Lester's this year, that policy has been focused on curbing, you know, protecting students from school shootings primarily. And so, they have a three-point recommendation that they want the schools, our schools at one level and the board at another level to consider. So, those kids are going to come later probably and talk to the board about the part that you would have to specifically approve. So, they want to enhance the training and the practice that we do with Alice, with the prevention technique for if there's, or the response technique for if there's an offender with a weapon in a school. They want to consider, and then for the board's consideration, and I've given them some further research on some court cases involving schools to discuss and legalities, but they want to take a look at potentially instituting some random searches and also potentially discussing putting metal detectors at our secondary schools. And so, the kids have done a lot of work. And I think it will be an interesting discussion for the board when they come to talk about that. And I think that's, that's very positive. But I did want to highlight that we are very aware that we've had things that we're not, we don't normally see at North Mason, or at least to the degree that we have this year. And as you noted from when Scotty and Ricardo spoke, they've seen just in the month that they've been at the secondary schools again, a return to the more respectful student environments that we're used to having. And so, we'll keep working together on those things. And I just wanted to share all of that with you.
Thank you. And that was the one you were talking about, the policy, is that the roundtable you were talking about, or is this a separate?
No, this is just, just her eighth grade government class.
Yeah, that was what they were talking about in there. Yeah. That's very cool. I'm so proud of those students, or of all the students, but the ones that are just getting together and doing that. It means a lot.
Yeah.
We're all, as parents at home, it's a breathing moment when you hear, "Oh", and then you send your kid back to school, right? And then it's like, ah, so, I totally get that. Thank you. Any discussion?
Any further discussion? Yes. I just wanted to bring up something a little bit more global, but at the same time. time, it's really pertinent for here. For all of these monitoring reports that we do, um, and the, the procedures and things that you set up and you work on or whatever, but especially for this one in particular, we're never going to get it perfect. You're never going to get it perfect. We may have some wonderful procedures and policies and all that sort of stuff in place that covers everything that can be thought of, but human beings are human beings and don't follow the path. Everybody takes different paths. And it's when something really serious happens that all kind of fingers start pointing and whatever it is, and you have to expect that. And, you know, you, you know, you hope that you never have the really serious one where the fingers are pointing directly because this is still good stuff. This is what you gotta do. Um, I'm really supportive and, you know, I think that you're, you're doing the right stuff as, you know, as best you can and we can and the whole school and all that. But, you know, things are always going to go a little bit different and hopefully only a little bit. And that's actually part of life. That's something that we learn from, but the kids learn from that too. And I wouldn't change that. I wouldn't want it to be perfect. Um, so just want to throw that out.
Okay.
And that's a global thing too.
That's a good point. That's a good point to put out there. I'm dragging my feet on this one because I know what's next, so.
Ever since I've been on this board have I worried too much about perfection.
Yeah. Um, okay. Um, so any other discussion? And, um, hearing none, I.
Can I make a public comment on discipline? Or do I wait till the end? I've never been to a board meeting before.
Yeah. The procedure would be you do have the right as president to make a decision on that, or you can also just simply decide because that's your decision. Our formula is we have to wait for you. But you do have that right as president.
Um, under the, the circumstance?
Yeah. I'm going to make a recommendation here. Uh, we, we do the public, public comment normally at the beginning and you sign up for it.
Oh, you have to sign up to say whatever.
Yeah, but, but, yeah, yeah, but we'll, we'll go ahead.
I mean, I can come back next month.
No, no, you're here. So we'll just ask you, if it's okay with you, to come up and tell us who you are and your address, and then you have no more than three minutes.
Okay.
Okay?
Is it on this topic here?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Then I thought I should wait until it was brought up, like I said, I haven't been to
a meeting before. Um, my name is Jennifer Kuo. I live in Allen, Upper Street. Uh, my kids both go to this district. One goes to Belfair and one goes to Hawkins. When it comes to discipline, Belfair, I don't know if this has ever been brought to your attention and that's why I'm here. Belfair Elementary is beyond chaotic. I had a meeting with Mr. King and Mrs. Collins a few weeks ago. My daughter's teacher quit four weeks ago. And she's a great teacher. I have been a volunteer at the school for seven years before COVID. Like I said, my daughter's at the middle school and I've been there since kindergarten. Hours a week with probably at least a dozen staff members I've worked with. I know the school well. I like Mr. King and I think that he is a great person, but I don't think that he is a good disciplinary man. We have students physically hurting each other, outbursts that are ridiculous, some kids running across the street unsupervised to the wetlands. Um, just a couple of weeks ago, there was a kindergartner who they evacuated the entire classroom because he was destroying furniture. They wouldn't let anyone come back to the classroom until the four adults that were in the room with him could get him under control. It's, there is a disciplinary problem, to say the least, and it's beyond frustrating. And I talked to parents that are like, well, just take your kid somewhere else. But I paid taxes in this district. This was my school. I don't want to take my kids somewhere else. I want to fix this problem. And granted, I will give you that that is a great project and I really commend you guys for figuring out how to solve your problem, but little kids don't know how to solve their problem. And some of this problem has come from COVID. It's not their fault. I get that. But this immersion, they, Mr. King told me that Mrs. Collins didn't really stay much, but Mr. King told me that they do immersion teaching there. Some of these kids should not be in the classroom with 28 other kids. They are getting all of the attention from every teacher, not the other kids, not the kids who might actually need help for five minutes. It's this person who's there having an outburst for an hour and we can't fix it. And I've talked to people who have come from other districts and they're like, this is the worst school I've ever seen. This is ridiculous. One child was physically assaulting another child. Oh, it was the same kindergartner. And Mr. King took him to his office where they played Legos apparently. I mean, I don't know what to say. I didn't get much feedback. It was actually what, what are my solutions for these problems? But I'm not trained as a teacher. I, I own a small business and I know that these kids are not who I want to hire in 15 years. You know, this is not going to be supported for our community. So I don't know what kind of help they need. I don't know who can help them. I just know that they're not functioning within the classroom at Belfair Elementary. And it's not only my daughter's class, it's a lot of classes. We're losing six teachers this year minimum. Granted, some are going to retire, but some of those teachers maybe would have stayed a few more years if they felt like they could make a difference. You know, one teacher told me before COVID, she goes, she cries every day because of one student. And it was a first grader. This was a first grader. This was a couple of years ago, granted, but so we've been having these problems for a while. COVID's obviously exacerbated it and I do agree with that. But I wanted to come because if you don't know, then you can't fix a problem. So that is why I came tonight. Yes. So I agree with you. I think we have great students in our schools. I went to North Mason and I'm proud to be from here. I painted the pages that were down at the Feller years ago and they're still there. You know, we were the first group that got to do something like that. So I think that these things are great, but at Belfair, we do have a problem.
Thank you very much.
So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Can I ask you a personal question?
Yes.
Just really call you out of context. Are you married to Ronnie?
I am.
Wow. Ronnie is a graduate. I know, you know him, play basketball with him, he's a wonderful guy.
And just a, a quick, anytime, um, if you're at the elementary and having, um, just making sure that you know that you can always come up here or call up here to the superintendent. Um, and, um, that, um, comments like that to definitely.
And just next time, when you first come in, just sign your name and then we'll know that you want to speak at any time.
And thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Great.
Thanks so much.
Okay. Um, we are going down here to.
Did we actually vote on that?
We haven't voted yet.
We still didn't vote on that.
Oh, okay. See, I'm missing all kinds of stuff today.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Yes. Okay. Um, we, uh, are on the, 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 student, uh, conduct and discipline and we are, um, anybody?
Any further discussion?
And if you're for it, say aye.
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 Aye. And any opposed? Not hearing any, that is, uh, that we are good with that. And we are on to the next one. And yes, I have been pushing this out and I've been dragging my feet and I don't want to. Um, but we are on to the school board, district director resignation of Mr. Whiteman.
Yes.
Do you want to read your letter or no?
That's up to you. I mean, they wrote the letter and by, by law, I cannot send it to you. I had to send it to Leanna.
I didn't, um, I read my pull it up. And if you would, if you want to read it, I will not be able to finish it.
I think we'll just.
Yeah.
Art, if you can come to the front.
We are, we have been honored to have our Whiteman serve as a member of our board of directors, sometimes our president, over the past.
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years?
Wow.
Awesome. But unfortunately Art is retiring in his regular life and moving out of his director area. And so he is retiring from the board, resigning from the board. And, um, that position now will have to be posted that it is open. We will post that for the required number of days and take applications for people who live in Director District One, which is way out in the Tuhuia area for those of you who are sitting here. Um, and we will follow a process for putting a replacement in until the next appropriate election and then that person will run again. But all the processes aside, you, you know, you were here and welcomed me to this position and I appreciate, I've learned so much from working with you. All of us on the board have benefited, all of our children in our schools have benefited so much from your service to North Mason schools over the past eighteen years. So giving you a little gift is not enough, but we do want to commemorate and say thank you and this is for you. And now you can say some words if you like.
Just a very few. And that is, um, it's not that I want to resign, it's that I have to resign because I'm moving out of District One. Where I live, I'm required to live there because of my job. I work for the Girl Scouts at a camp and the job that I have has a live in at the camp requirement. Now that I'm retiring, I'm kicked out. Um, and so I will still be in the district and move into Lakeland Village. And, uh, but I can't be on the school board, um, at District One because by law, I'm not living in the district that I'm representing. So that's fine, but that's okay. It's been a long time. It's been a, a good round, whatever, for it. But it's time for someone else. Um, I've enjoyed it. I've had good times and bad times and anyway, I'm not, I'm not leaving the district, I'm just leaving District One. So thank you and I appreciate all of you folks too. We have a really good board.
I'd like a personal word.
You may. Just one, sorry.
I have served with Art for a long time. For how many years have I been? Fourteen? Something like that. Yeah. You folks don't know the whole history of our relationship, but I've been very close to Art over four elections. And there have been some very difficult times for this district and Art stood up to those times back in the day when things were very hard going. Before I really even knew him, I was impressed by the man's integrity and courage. And in working with him over the last fourteen years, there's nothing that has changed my mind. He is one of the most honorable men I've ever served with here or in the academy. He is a man of unshakable courage and of principle and it's been a great privilege to serve with him and to see what a real servant of the people, humble, self-effacing, and absolutely with backbone of steel looks like. And so Art, thank you very much. I hope we will have some good times together. And, uh, you've just been a wonderful colleague and I greatly appreciate your service and our friendship. Thank you.
I am not going to go on because I will explode. But I want to dismere what, what he said and you have, um, just been amazing here. And now you get to, um, critique as, as a member of the community.
He can be real pain now.
You won't be doing the self-assessment from the board, but you, uh, definitely as being not just one of us, but being us, you made this board of what it, what it is. So, um, thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay. All right. Well, anybody else want to cry about it? Hugs for you. And we are on to the adjournment, um, right?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, the good of the order, uh, board and superintendent for any comments from anyone? Um, I have one if nobody wants to start that. This is just something, um, kind of along the discipline, um, but it wasn't quite appropriate because I was using it as a personal, um, thing. But, um, I have had the honor of being able to try out our HomeLink. And, um, where it seems that I'm a parent first and I'm a board member second. And so when I come to a teacher or something, I always have to say it, that I am coming to you as a parent, um, but I'm paying attention like a board member. You know, I'm getting to try this out, you know? And so the, what I have experienced with the James Taylor and HomeLink from, there's a, a teacher that is your kid's teacher from Texas, wherever, there's like six or seven of them so far and we've only been in a month and a half, you know? And they're pretty good as advisors, but the people down here, where I feel like when I call in and I feel like I'm complaining, so I try to explain that I'm not, they're like, no, we don't think you're complaining. You're advocating for your child. And where I think I will hit a wall or a roadblock, it's wide open. Or they'll say, this is what we can offer you. And I'll be like, great, well, that doesn't work for me. And they go, okay, well then this is what we can offer you. And so, but they individualize it for a child, um, a, a student, uh, no matter what the age is down there, they, it's all individual. So I'm like, why didn't they come to me with this packet? You know, because there is no packet. Children aren't packets, you know? And especially kids that are coming through, uh, James Taylor, there's something going on in their life, something going on in my child's life that whether it's just paying attention or, um, our health and whatever. And they have, it has been amazing going through it. Um, and I, I've asked some parents that are in there that I know and some that I didn't just to hear what they had to say, because I'm like, am I having the same experience? And I am. I'm like, they were frustrated at first and these doors started opening and their kids started responding to school, you know? And my son gets to come back, this is, we thought we were, okay, you're in, your kid, I'm sorry, I'm taking you guys on this journey with me, but, um, I take him out of school to HomeLink, right? And now he has no social. And now I'm like, what am I doing? You know, and I'm feeling terrible about doing it, but we really need to do that. And then I call them and I'm like, okay, maybe they can help. And then we talk about electives. Now I get to bring my child up. He gets to do, first he couldn't do it in three weeks, so they're like, well, let's open it up. Now he gets to finish it in five weeks. So it's a little bit more lax and he's getting better. And now we get to come up to the school, starting Monday, he starts physical education and computers as his electives. And because he cannot be there every day of the week, then they do a set thing where he does some stuff at home, uh, for those classes. And you don't know what kind of tears come out of a mom that is this feeling at the end. So I just want to commend this, uh, this, not just this district, but the individuals that make it individual for the kids. So, and being able to see it as a board member and a parent is something else. So that was, I just wanted to report that for the good of the order tonight.
Here.
Thank you. Okay. No more emotional stuff for me. I'm just going to.
I had a quick comment. Actually a question. This really hit me. And I was wondering, I know that there's, um, always challenges in putting things online. I'd love to put this on my Facebook with just a few comments about what we're doing. And I was wondering if there were any dangers or objections to doing that.
Why don't you let Jackie share it on the district Facebook?
Good.
And then you can, you know, do how you share that to your own page.
Yeah, good. Okay, great idea. And the other thing I wanted to add, I forgot one thing. We, of course, as board members are separate people. We can't have three of us together at a party or anything like that. So we can't prevent our supporters from saying certain things. Way back in the day, when Laura and Art and I were first running, we were sort of known as a reform ticket. And one of our supporters came up with this little, I don't know, maxim or saying that I thought was so good. North Mason needs its ABCs. Art, Laura Boat, and yours truly.
That's nice.
We're going to miss A R A.
Art, yes, you will be missed, but you know, we're going to see you in these seats every month, right? Definitely see us online. We will be thinking of you.
I will still be doing other stuff that I've done along with Scholarship Foundation, the Polonis Club, that sort of thing.
He's going to move behind me, so just gotta come over and.
You guys will be.
Backyard neighbors.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Art.
That was the other A.
Another A, that's right. You're taking the A. All right.
Hey, you're right.
Okay. Okay. Well, we are here to the, uh, self-assessment of the meeting and it is my honor to do it this time. And we have four present, one excused. And I, um, am just going to go, um, uh, through this here that the agenda was well-planned and focused, uh, on the real work of the board. The board followed its agenda and did not allow itself to get sidetracked, which a The board followed its agenda and did not allow itself to get sidetracked, which a little bit, but it was totally warranted today and I will not mark this down at all. Uh, board members prepared for and contributed to the meeting and I think we definitely did. And the meeting proceeded without interruptions or distractions. And the board's deliberation and decision-making processes were public. Uh, participation was balanced. All participated, no one dominated. Members listened attentively, avoiding side conversations. And work was conducted in an atmosphere of trust and openness. Meeting participants treated each other with respect and courtesy. And I am giving us a satisfactory on all of those. And on to the governance principal review. Um, the board actions occurred at the policy level rather than at the operational level. The board reviews policy about each topic before discussing that issue. In writing an additional policy, the board starts with a board statement and becomes more detailed in a logical and disciplined sequence. I put NA on that one, uh, because we are not writing an additional policy today. Uh, the board minimizes time spent monitoring pastor performances. The board routinely dedicates time to reviewing, improving its own process. And the board clarifies priorities, values when considering potential outcomes, beneficiaries, and costs of outcomes. The board follows an annual calendar based on a plan for doing its work. And the board helped, the board chair helps the board efficiently conduct its meeting. And the board spends most of its time deliberating issues, defining and clarifying its vision and linking with its community, as opposed to fixing things. The board supports the superintendent in any reasonable interpretation of its policies. And aside from the NA that I gave in writing other policies, I am saying yes to those and gave us an overall satisfactory. And that, uh, goes on to the next, uh, board meeting. And this one was a week late, so this is actually going to come up a little faster than we are, um, used to. So the next board meeting will be on April 21st at 6:30 PM, again in this boardroom. And we will be one down and, uh, with an open seat over there. So, uh, meeting will be adjourned. And it says that the board president, Bode, will adjourn the meeting. I will take Bode's position and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.